Please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the April meeting of the Hudson School Board. First up, we have several recognitions. So, me and Sandy, I turn this over to you, and we've got the state Science Olympiad participants first.
All right, thank you. Yes, while Mr. Anderson and our Science Olympiad participants come up toward the mic, he'll help assist us here, I'll share a little bit. The mission of the Wisconsin Science Olympiad is to promote STEM education for students in Wisconsin K-12 schools through the challenge of science, technology, engineering, and math competition. This is the fourth year of offering Science Olympiad at Hudson Middle School, the third year of competition, and it has expanded from 12 students the first year to 30 students this year. We are also pleased to share that a high school team was also established this year. With us this evening is Matt Anderson, Science Olympiad coach, and members of the team who will share the various competitions we competed in at the state tournament, held in March, and our impressive results. So, students, if you would please state your name, what competition or challenge you were in, and then I, it looks like there's some medal around a lot of your necks, so if there is some medals that you won, we'd love to hear about that, too.
Maybe they're grade also.
Pardon?
Maybe they're grade.
Grade, sure. Name grade in your competitions. And you have to step up close to that microphone.
Okay, I'm Channing Miller, I'm in eighth grade, and I participated in the Boomer Lever, which I got second in state, and Write It, Do It, which I got sixth in state, and Herpetology, which I also got second in state, and...
So many events. And you also filled in Admiralty and other events.
Oh, and Experimental Design, which I got fifth in state, too. Yes, and I filled in for events, too.
My name is Ingrid Holter, I am in eighth grade. I participated in Write It, Do It with Channing, and I got sixth place. I did Roller Coaster, which we took third place in, and then I did Picture This and Heredity, which we got ninth place in.
My name is Isabel Laurel, I'm also in eighth grade, and I participated at state in Aerial Scramble, we got sixth place, Circuit Lab, we got sixth place, and also Density, which we also placed sixth place in.
My name is Gray Anderson, and I am in sixth grade. I participated in five events at state, and I got a medal in Thermodynamics, which I got fifth place.
My name is Shlok Johnny, I'm in sixth grade, and I participated in, wait, okay, so I participated in Anatomy and Physiology, which we got, I think, sixteenth place with my brother, he's over there. And then in Dynamic Planet, we got sixth place, also with my brother, and then in Disease Detectives with my brother, we got third place, yeah. And then in Fossils, also with my brother, we got third place again, and in Codebusters, we got first place, and that was with Dylan and my brother.
And that was also our first ever state championship, so Dylan was on that team.
Hello, I'm Dylan Sias, I'm a seventh grader. What I competed in state in was Codebusters, which I got first, and Meteorology, which I got sixth.
Uh, uh, I'm Shlok Johnny, I participated at state for Science Olympiad in four events. Yeah, wait, no, five events, five events. I did Anatomy and Physiology with my brother, well, all my events were with my brother, actually. So, Anatomy and Physiology, Fossils, we got third in, Disease Detectives, we got third in, Dynamic Planet, we got fifth in, and Codebusters, we got first in, so that's pretty good.
My name is Preston Jensen, I'm in seventh grade, and in the most recent one, I was in Circuit Lab, Dynamic Planet, Battery Buggy, and Solar System, and in Circuit Lab, I got sixth place, and then at the one before that, I got three, but I forgot what they were for.
Yep, so we took fifth overall, and we had 40 total medals. One thing that Shlok missed, he had 27 career medals in middle school, so, and then we have a lot of eighth graders that will be graduating to the high school team here next year, so keep the momentum going.
Thank you so much, very impressive. Any comments or questions from anyone at the board?
Go ahead, Rob. Just a, I guess, a quick question. First off, thermodynamics, really? But, question on, what is aerial scramble?
Who's in that one?
We basically, we get a kit, and we have to prepare it, we plan it at home, and we figure out what's the best way, and our longest flight time is the goal, and then upon arriving, you get a fresh new kit, and you have to scramble in, I think, 30 minutes to recreate what you did at home. They had a screw-up with state where you got to bring a pre-prepared one, so we were able to have an advantage. Ours did, however, crash into the back of a kid, so that was kind of a setback, but it still worked out, but, yeah, so.
Wow, you kids crushed it. Thank you all for your competition.
Next, we want to announce that the Hudson School District was notified that we have received the 2019 Best Communities for Music Education Award. The award program recognizes outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who have made music education part of a well-rounded education. Designations are made to districts and schools that demonstrate an exceptionally high commitment and access to music education. The district first applied in 2005, and to the best of our knowledge, we have been recognized 11 out of the last 15 years. We can all be very proud of the outstanding music programs in our schools and the community. Congratulations. And then next, PLTW Distinguished High School, we're excited to share that for the second year in a row, Hudson High School has been recognized as a Project Lead the Way Distinguished High School for increasing access, engagement, and achievement in our PLTW programs. We are extremely proud of this award from an organization with national reach and presence. Hudson is one of just 114 high schools across the country, and just one of eight in Wisconsin to receive this recognition, and as far as we can tell, we're the only high school in Wisconsin that received it two years in a row. Congratulations to our engineering, biomedical, and computer science teachers.
All right. And we have another recognition, and that is for one of our own here on the board, Bruce Hanson, was recognized and for achieving Level One as far as from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, so I'm going to give that to Bruce, and this is your award, congratulations.
Thank you. A lot of board members take six years to get their first one.
Certificate suitable for framing.
Right, it is a certificate suitable for framing, yes.
Better framing.
But no, we've got now several school board members that have, you know, achieved, you know, that that level, and hopefully will continue to climb. We try to encourage development of all our board members, so anyway, congratulations, Bruce.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have requests to speak. Do we have anyone?
I think so.
All right, moving on to superintendent's report here from Dr. Olet on his reports.
I thought the kids would have stuck around to hear me talk about an impending snow day on Thursday, but it's not on the, not on the agenda tonight, but we are watching the storm that's supposedly coming the end of this week. April 2nd, school board election results. Tim created a tally sheet, it's a draft, obviously, they're the unofficial results, so we don't want people thinking that this is the actual canvassed results, which actually happened tomorrow, is that correct, Tim?
Correct.
And that will be right here at the district office, and do we have a time for that, if anybody wants to attend?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock here at the district office, which will actually require, I think, Jamie to appoint a clerk, because our Carrie, who's our clerk, is unable to make the, she's not able to be here tonight, and she also...
All right, and since we're on that point, and it's on your part of your report, Sue, is that something that you could fill in for Carrie since she's out of state?
Okay, when again?
It'd be tomorrow at nine.
Tomorrow.
We want to give you plenty of advance notice, I think you have at least 15 hours.
I'll just check it out on my new iPhone.
Yeah, this is, it was kind of a last-minute thing that took Carrie away, so.
Savviness over there.
Yeah, I can do that.
You can make that work.
All right, so then, that's the honor you get to do, is stand by the canvas, but then you also can act as clerk for tonight's closed session.
He could make up about 70 votes for me tomorrow. What?
There's, so, good turnout in the election, and again, there's not a need to count who got more, or to dwell on that point, you know, but Jamie did have more votes than Bruce, but Bruce is the all-time vote-getter of school board elections back in 2016, as he reminds us, so, questions about...
That's why I called for two out of three, so I'll take that.
So, questions about the election. Okay, retreat, policy governance, just kind of an update on where we're at with things. Again, the May 28th work session, it's a Tuesday, if you remember, because Memorial Day is on Monday. Jamie and I will be having a conference call here in the next week or so with Drew Howard to kind of discuss some things, some feedback, we'll get some from Rob, too, at the National School Board Convention, and also the kind of feedback we've had from the board through the policy governance discussion, as far as the book is, that the board's been doing. And then also then, I think we settled on the date of June 8th, I think, is that right? Am I saying that right? In the morning of June 8th, for the board retreat, and that is a Saturday morning. I told all the cabinet members they need to be there, and tentative, no, actually, it'll just be the board and myself, because it's Saturday morning, and it's a board retreat, so there's not a, not a reason to have them there. So, that is set up, and so as we get more details flushed out, we'll get those out, but I know we'll be having that conference call here coming up. The last thing I have on there is the staff recognition banquet, and you can see the, if you could RSVP to the human resources office, I know Jamie had asked if there was an email or a phone number, if you know, you can let Andrea know, she can write it down, and...
I already turned mine into Tim's.
You get a gold star for being the first one, and...
Oh, wait a minute.
He's sitting in front of the class, too, all the time.
But maybe, maybe Sue got it in first.
I think there's two gold stars.
Oh, gee, well, this is like vote counting. So, it will be on Monday, April 29th, social hour at 5:00, the welcome and dinner at 5:45, and program to follow. We have a wonderful list of staff members that have had tremendous experience in our district. Obviously, we have staff members that are retiring, that obviously we hate to see them go, but are excited for them and their next step in their, in their life, and what they're planning on doing, so it should be, it's always an enjoyable night, well done, and Andrea's department puts it on it, it's really, really well-received. Do we, not to put anybody on the spot, but I guess, is anybody, do we know if anybody can't be there for that night?
I tend to leave traveling right now to North Carolina.
To the Hudson House? Tend to leave, not to the Hudson House, no.
Maybe a detour to North Carolina?
Yes, well, we could see if we could do some type of web thing with you up there, saying, you know, congratulations, everybody, in like a big picture of Bruce up there.
I have plenty of those.
We do have some construction photos we could use, so...
I'll let you know, I'll let you know, if I don't travel, then I'll be...
Not a problem, so if you could just get back to Andrea or the HR office, or you can email me, and I can let her know as well. But, with that being said, that is the superintendent reports for right now.
All right, any questions? Hearing none, we got other report, we have Rob Brown, who's fresh back from Philadelphia, well, actually, by about seven days, but who's counting?
I have seven days.
Yeah, and so, Rob's got a short presentation, I don't know if you were able to see it, it was uploaded, and he's got a few slides to go over, so.
Yeah, just, just quick, it was absolutely fantastic, you know, a lot of seventy, Philly cheesesteaks were as good as I remember, but all in all, it was a very good conference, and to be able to meet school board members from across the nation was absolutely fantastic, especially those in the surrounding states. And if you don't mind, Tim, next slide. So, quick overview, there were two key things I focused on, the governance and leadership track, we'll spend a little bit of time on that topic here in a little bit, but also spend some time in what they call study halls, so in between sessions, we had about 20 minutes, 30 minutes, to visit with sometimes vendors, sometimes folks that didn't have an hour and 15 minutes of collateral or information to share, so it's about 30 minutes, sorry.
Turn your mic down.
And so, the first one that I participated in was this item on tobacco use, and we had, gosh, about a month or two ago, we talked a little bit about e-cigarettes and tobacco use in general within our, the middle school and high school here, and ultimately, across the nation, you know, a couple of things that I learned, 21% of all middle school and high school students are using tobacco of some sort, and just goes to, you know, reiterate some of the things that we talked about earlier, and in 2018, over the last couple of decades, that was the first time that cigarette use actually increased in middle school and high school. Little, little eye-opening there, but CVS Pharmacy, they've allocated tens of millions of dollars in resources to school districts across the state, and if we choose, we can register our schools, and they even start as early as elementary age, making them aware, getting in front of the concern that bubblegum-flavored tobacco isn't necessarily a good thing, and how to say no, and how to help their peers also say no. From the middle school, high school perspective, there are tools that are available, online tools, as well as other handouts and curriculum that are available, again, free to our district by school, if we choose to participate. I sent a handout around, and I do have an email that Nick, I'll share with you, of a gal who said that she'd be more than happy to work with us if we, if we so chose. So, the next slide, talk a little bit about the policy governance and leadership track. You know, the, we talked a lot about policy governance, but also about how strategic planning goes hand-in-hand with that policy governance piece, and for greater success, looking at how do we go about leveraging our community at the same time we're working amongst ourselves to change, frankly, how we, how we lead the district. Our strategic plan is something we've been talking about for some time, and ultimately, the more that we engage our community, the more that we'll be able to truly have something that will represent our, the taxpayers. All right, next slide. We talk about agendas, and agendas, as we've talked about with the book that we're looking through, will continue, will change, or should change, based on the book, and this is a slide, or some information that came from a slide that really stood out to me. From an agenda standpoint, typically, 25 to 33% of any agenda is based on stuff that we're covering 80, 90% today. Strategic planning, once we have that in line with our community, we'll spend two-thirds to three-quarters of our time on what does programming look like, how are we educating our kids in our classrooms, what do our classrooms look like, culture, equity, other items that are important to our community that, frankly, we don't spend a lot of time talking about today. Next slide, this coherent versus policy governance, and something that I've learned is that, just recently, in this book that's noted on this slide, just came out in 2019, there are two, perhaps three books that have come between the book that we're looking at now and this particular book, and there are best practices, lessons learned from other districts, and what this does is it actually helps us go through best practices and look at real-life examples and challenges, things that we haven't even talked about yet that might help us as we continue to move forward with our work moving towards policy governance. And so, and the last item here that's important is that every school district, every board has its own culture, and it's important to remember that the culture's based on our community. As boards and superintendents change, many times in many districts, that culture tends to change as well, the direction of the district tends to change, but if we embrace the information that we're talking about and put this strategic plan in place, and this governance approach, looking at the will of our community, regardless of changes in the school board, as elections come and go, leaders come and go, ultimately, that culture will continue to remain the same. And last slide. I met a school district, a couple of folks from a school district in DeForest. DeForest is near Madison, Wisconsin, and they have, they started with policy governance, actually, the book that we're starting with now, and had a bunch of success, and then about five years ago, changed to this coherence governance, which is this book on the last slide, and from their perspective, it was a night-and-day difference, much more applicable to how they wanted to work with their community, much more involved from a strategic standpoint, and frankly, was much more appropriate for how they wanted to lead their community. And they were very much interested in if we had interest in a joint retreat, and again, just a thought, they'd love to talk about best practices, they'd love to talk about sharing challenges, potential solutions to those challenges. Something else that's pertinent is Chippewa Falls is also a coherent governance district, and so I think Nick knows how to Eliopolis, that might be, given how close they are, another good district to talk with as well. So, and with that, that is the end of my report.
Thanks, Rob, for sharing. Any questions for Rob? But we always appreciate, you know, I went to last year's national convention, and hopefully, now, where is it next year, do you know?
I think they said Denver, but I don't know that for sure.
Okay. I think it was New Orleans the year before, but we had something come up that we couldn't make that, but it's good to get different areas. Did they happen to get more people from the East Coast, similar down in Texas, it seemed like there was more school districts presenting that were from the Texas area, which sometimes their laws aren't always, you know, consistent with ours, but was it more eastern, East Coast oriented, or?
Several of the events that I went to were led by Minnesota, there was one led by Wisconsin from a policy governance perspective, another was led by Colorado, and I've, I've got all the collateral from all the courses that I went to, so certainly I'll share with everybody.
Yeah, they have other states, like when we were in Texas, there was, Anoka was leading one, so, yeah, that's good to get ideas from other places, and so I think we'll be able to talk about that more, both at our work session in May, and then our retreat, see what direction we go with, you know, some of these ideas, we haven't finished our first book discussion yet, but, you know, we look forward to seeing where this can take us, so we always want to look for improvement.
Chicago.
It ends up, Chicago?
Yeah.
All right, so that is close, hopefully, we can get some board members going in. Do we know a date on that, Tim?
April 4th to 6th.
Oh, okay. I like San Antonio in March better than Chicago and April 4th, but, all right, San Diego, that's good. All right, well, we'll maybe take advantage of the close proximity. Hearing no other questions, then, for Rob, I move on to topics for action, and I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda items pursuant to the language and dollar amount.
Move approval of the consent items in that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $3,032,869.63.
Second.
All right, motion by Bruce, second by Bob, all those in favor of the consent agenda items, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent agenda items are approved. Next up for discussion are the health and dental insurance rates.
So, it, I mean, if you want to discuss it otherwise, this is the same recommendation that we made to you during your board work session, administration would recommend these rate increases. We did have a meeting with the teachers advisory committee last week, and they thought these looked pretty good, all things considered, with health and dental rates and everything else. We'll also be putting together kind of a health and dental kind of committee to start to look at how we can start getting on the front end of some of the increases that may be coming down, and how we can address some of that stuff, so this is the administration's recommendation.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Move to approve the health and dental insurance rates as proposed for 2019, 2020.
Second.
All right, motion's been made, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Next up are the 2019, 2020 wage and salary increase proposal that was discussed at the last work session.
Yep, so you continue to have the recommendation from the administration, it's the same recommendation we made for you at the work session, it'd be a 2.5 increase for the board-approved increase for wages and salaries for all employees, other than employees that have received a significant discipline, or employees that are currently subject to a performance improvement plan, or if they've received notice from their supervisor that they're going on an improvement plan, so the administration's recommendation is, continues to be what it was in two weeks ago.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I recommend that we approve the 2019, 20 wage and salary recommendations.
Second.
Do we need to state what the, that it's a 2.5?
Yes.
All right.
Recommending the 2.5 increase for wage rates and salaries for eligible staff members.
Is there, that's been the motion, then, and Bruce, you second it, is that right?
Yes.
All right. And again, this was, as explained, as shown there, that we've followed the CPI pretty closely over the last five, six years, and the current CPI is 2.44%. So, is there any other further questions on this point? All right, with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Final item on the action items is to select a delegate to be able to go to the annual convention of the third CISA.
This is, this is, I think, the highlight of the evening, so I don't know if we need to do this by secret ballot, because I know multiple ones, multiple board members want to do this, but we do need to select a member, I think, last year, did Rob, did you do it, or Bruce do it? One of, I think...
I did it two years ago.
Two years ago, did you do it last, I think Rob went last, you know, so it is a meeting that takes place, I think, June 3rd at 7:00 PM, it's in Turtle Lake, it's not down in Madison, so, any takers?
And this is actually statutorily required to be on our agenda tonight.
Yep.
So, all right, Rob said that he would do it, is there anyone else interested? All right, is there a second?
So, we need somebody to nominate, and then a second.
Yeah, can we have somebody make a nomination, then?
I'll nominate Rob Brown to represent us at the CISA 11 Annual Convention, June 3rd. Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, now entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the language quoted.
You're the man, Rob. The board will entertain a motion, let's see, pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19985, Part 1, Part C, to discuss and take action appropriate regarding the employment and performance evaluation data of public employees over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, consideration of certified and administrative staff employment, resignation, retirement, and a preliminary notice of contract or renewal, and B, pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19985, Part 1, Part N, to discuss contract negotiations with construction contractors whenever competitive reasons require a closed session, and C, pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19985, Part 1, Part G, to confer with legal counsel who is rendering written advice... one, parent G, to confer with legal counsel who is rendering written advice concerning strategy to be adopted with respect to litigation.
All right, there's a second, and it calls for a roll call vote. Bowman?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Kattas?
Aye.
Logland?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. The motion passes, and we are now going to convene in closed session once the room is cleared. Thank you.